Good morning. Are we ready to get started? I'd like to welcome everybody to the July the 2nd, 2012 organizational meeting. I can tell you, I'd like to note for the record, that at this exact time, 15 years ago, I was checking into Johnston Memorial Hospital in its former location behind us to have a baby. So, a very brief 14 hours later, he finally showed up. So, I'd like to wish my son Chandler a happy 15th birthday.
Very good.
And, I know, did the mayor have a birthday yesterday? Well, happy birthday!
Mr. Humphries had one a few days ago.
Yes, he had one on Thursday, I believe, so, very good.
I think both of ours were a bit more than 14 years ago.
Do you want to start happy birthday? Do you want to start it?
No.
Stop raising your hand there. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the roll, and then I believe Ms. Lowe's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Humphries?
Here.
Mr. Berry?
Here.
Mrs. Lowe?
Here.
And, Mr. Morgan.
Here.
And, Ms. Lowe will now lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Hang on just one second. Let me just... All right, the first item this morning is going to be the election of the mayor. I will now call for nominations for mayor to serve for the next two years of Deaglin Town Council. The floor is open.
I'll nominate Ed Morgan for that position.
I second that.
Are there any other nominations as mayor? No other nominations? Go one a third time, one more time. Yeah, all right, we have a motion by Mr. Howard, second by Mr. Humphries, to nominate Ed Morgan as the mayor. We'll now call the roll. Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lowe?
Abstain.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
All right, next order of business is vice mayor, and the floor is open for nominations as vice mayor.
I would like to nominate Kathy Lowe to serve in that position.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? Any other nominations for vice mayor? Go one a third time, any other nominations? All right, motion by Mr. Morgan, with a second by Mr. Berry, to nominate Kathy Lowe as vice mayor. We'll call the roll. Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Abstain.
And, Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
All right, I believe next is the appointment of our town manager, currently serving as Gregory W. Kelly. This is more an inspector.
Actually, Madam Clerk, I believe at this time, the mayor would take control of the meeting.
Well, we debated about that, but if that is appropriate, you know, I'm more than prepared to do it. I did want to comment that it appears to me that yesterday, we had a situation where, as far as the town went, that nobody was in charge. You know, there was no mayor, there was no town council member, or, excuse me, town manager. I'm not sure how it affected your term, but there was no mayor.
No, that's incorrect, because the budget officially passed it, was adopted on July 1, because it was voted on last month.
Okay.
But doesn't your contract expire? The officers stay in place until such time as they are replaced.
All right, because I, you know, I had a term, when we went through the swearing-in process, we had a term that would, you know, begin on July 1 and end on June 30. And it suggested to me that there was a day there where, you know, there really was nobody in charge.
The way the charter is worded is that you will hold your office until you are replaced.
Okay.
I'd gotten a call from Dick Cheney, he had said that he was in charge yesterday.
All right, well, I'm glad that Dick's doing better.
Hell, hey.
I think Dick died.
All right, well, thank you. I would entertain a motion regarding the appointment of the town manager.
I was hell, hey.
I'd like to place a nomination Greg Kelly.
Second that.
Okay, and are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask our clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, our next appointment is the appointment for the position of assistant town manager. This is currently filled by Mr. Garrett Jackson, and there he is back there, studiously taking in these things. And, I'll entertain a motion regarding that appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reappoint Greg, oh, Greg, Garrett Jackson. Garrett Jackson, Assistant Town Manager, Garrett Greg. His second in command.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Garrett Jackson as assistant town manager. Any further nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any further nominations, don't get worried, Garrett. I just, since this is a new position, I would like, for the record, for Mr. Kelly to tell us exactly what Mr. Jackson's responsibilities are.
There is a full job description that was given to the council, I can reproduce that once again. The main course of business for Mr. Jackson is to oversee the capital improvement plan as a result of him being, he is still the director of planning, and will be overseeing the capital improvement plan. And the pertinent departments that that plan flow through would ordinarily flow through Garrett in my absence or even before me, if necessary. But I'll be happy to reproduce that actual...
I seen it, I just wanted it, you know, for the record.
Actual job description. What we've tried to do is maintain the open door with all the department heads with me, but give them an alternative relative to capital improvement projects. Employment issues and things of that nature would still be handled through me, and in my absence, Garrett has the full authority to act on my behalf, signing purchase orders and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second to reappoint Mr. Garrett Jackson as assistant town manager. I'll ask our clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the appointment of town clerk. Position is currently held by Ms. Cecile M. Rosenbaum. I'll entertain a nomination regarding this appointment.
I'd like to place a nomination Cecile Rosenbaum for this position.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Cecile M. Rosenbaum as our town clerk. Any further nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask Ms. Rosenbaum to call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the appointment of town treasurer, a position currently held by Mr. Mark W. Godby. Nomination in that regard, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Mark Godby as treasurer for the town of Abingdon.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Mark Godby as treasurer for the town of Abingdon. Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask our new town clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
And, our final administrative appointment is the appointment of our town attorney, positioned currently held by Ms. Deborah Eisenhower. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reappoint Deborah Eisenhower as town attorney.
Second. Okay, any additional nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask our clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, and we are also required to make an appointment of officers, such as chief and assistant chief of our fire department. Currently, our chief of our fire department is Mr. Joey Burke, and his assistant is Chief John McCormick. And I'll entertain a motion regarding this point.
I'd like to re-nominate both these individuals for this position, but they're doing a very good job. I'd like to nominate Chief Burke for that position and John McCormick for assistant chief.
Second.
Okay, and hearing no further nominations, again, we have a nomination to reappoint Mr. Joey Burke as chief of the Abingdon Fire Department, and Mr. John McCormick as assistant chief. I'll ask our clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have appointments to several council positions. The first is the Abingdon Planning Commission. Mr. Howard has served here for the past two years, and is eligible for reappointment under town policy. And I believe you expressed a willingness to continue to serve.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Howard to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Bob Howard as the, excuse me, council representative to the planning commission. Any further discussion, hearing none? Ms. Rosenbaum?
Mr. Howard?
Abstain.
And, Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, the next appointment is for the Board of Architectural Review. That position has been held for the past, I believe, four years of Mr. Berry, and under the policy that we have at this point in time, he would not be eligible for reappointment. I do know that Mr. Berry has expressed a, you know, strong desire to continue in this position, and, you know, I think this merits some discussion on the part of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that this is the appropriate time to discuss this. I might move that we table this.
All right.
Well, I move that we table this. Any further discussion at our August meeting?
Second.
In that motion, Ms. Humphries, would you be willing to discuss all the appointments, because they all expire right at the same time?
I think it would be prudent.
Okay, and under that policy, would Mr., under your motion, would Mr. Berry be permitted to continue to serve? I gather...
I think he would not be able to serve until we actually actually make a discussion in this and be able to reappoint him, because his appointment has expired, or will expire. So, he can serve until his appointment actually expires.
It's just one month.
I believe, under Robert's rules, that he would come at the same heading, have to check that, but as the council members, and he would be in place until he is actually replaced.
Very good.
Okay, so, I'm hearing a motion that indicates that we would table this actual appointment until our August meeting, allowing council to have some opportunity to discuss these things, and Mr. Berry would continue to serve until reappointed or another appointment was made. Is that the nature of your motion?
Exactly, sir.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Is there further discussion to that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask Ms. Rosenbaum to call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the appointment to the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. This is currently handled by Vice Mayor Kathy Lowe, and under our policy, Ms. Lowe would be eligible for reappointment.
I'll nominate Kathy Lowe for this position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Kathy Lowe as a representative to this particular body. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
And finally, we have the appointment to the District 3 Governmental Cooperative. Mr. Bob Howard is currently a representative to this group. I believe it's an appointment that they asked we make on a year-to-year basis, and Mr. Rick Humphries is our alternate to this body. We indicate here in our notes that Mr. Howard is eligible for reappointment, and again, they also request that we, you know, make an appointment and also appoint an alternate to serve as well. Your pleasure, this one, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we leave Mr. Howard and Mr. Humphries in their current positions.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me. We have a motion to ask that Mr. Howard continue to serve as our representative to the District 3 Governmental Cooperative, and that Mr. Humphries serve as his alternate. Again, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to approval of minutes we have for our consideration, the June 4, 2012, regular meeting minutes, which I would note were the first transcontinental, was the first transcontinental meeting ever held by this particular body. And I'll entertain a motion regarding these minutes.
I'll make the motion to be approved, Mr. Morgan says. Corrections.
Are there any corrections or additions noted?
Second.
Okay, all right, so, we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Rosenbaum?
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Excuse me, I abstain.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot about that. Let's see, Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye. Okay, and I would offer my compliments to everybody who had a hand in bringing that together. It was really an extraordinarily good occasion that we had, and I must admit that in the back of my mind, I had a lot of fears about the technological aspects of this particular venture, and whether it would all come together and so forth, but it did come together very nicely. And, again, my compliments to everybody on both sides of the Atlantic that made that happen. And I hope we might be able to do that again sometime.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now, before we continue, in those minutes, there wasn't any reason to change it, but I think there might be some further consideration, given where that I was listed as absent. I don't know what the term would be. Maybe there's a Latin term in there, Mr. Lawyer?
Perhaps it could be absent but participating abroad, because legally, you can participate, but you cannot vote.
Right, right.
Isn't there some kind of term, like present in abstentia?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. It has to be something that has to be in there.
Well, and I'm going to throw this out there, here's my reasoning. At the point afterwards, we didn't participate in the meeting.
All right, right.
So, the votes and things, I listed as absent, because technically, we weren't participating in the meeting, and I may be wrong, so, but we can go back and find...
I was just looking at a more...
Yeah.
Favorable description of that.
Or maybe present for ceremonial meeting or something.
Would there be a motion? I think we ought to have a motion for me to come up with a more descriptive word for that in the minutes.
And here, but absent, doesn't count, because that could be today, too.
I move that we authorize the town manager to create the appropriate descriptive words for Mr. Humphries' participation in Abingdon, England.
And if I can find a Latin, or if I can find a Latin, French, or Old English word, I will do so.
Well, I would, it would be nice if they would, if we could do one, that would cover anyone in the future, because this could be a future event, so...
Well, we could address them case by case.
There actually is a Latin term called present in abstentia. It actually, you know, it says, I mean, it's got some, it really is a legal term that has to do with people who are being tried for crimes, but...
Well, there we go again.
But it says not physically present.
Yeah, what is it? My wife says, "If I had a nickel for every time I've heard that for her."
Research and concept, so do support in locally present.
Well, again, we have a motion that our town manager be authorized to...
I will second that.
Okay, and a second to come up with a more appropriate description for the nature of the meeting that we had, or the presence, or lack of...
Just make it good.
Yeah, let's find a good term, make a precedent, excuse me. Ms. Rosenbaum, please.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I might comment very briefly, that the mayor from Abingdon, England, had requested that we send them a copy of these minutes, so, we will be transmitting a copy of the minutes, and I'm not sure if we've got the video on this end, but we'll even include the video with that for their records.
And I did receive a very nice letter, which I believe I got back to Ms. Rosenbaum?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, from the mayor, and it's one of those things that I think should be framed and put into our Abingdon collection, but it certainly acknowledged that. And if I recall, there was also a further development, that we've received an email from Mr. Mike Badcock, who I believe is their current mayor, or no...
No, no.
Prior mayor.
Prior mayor. And he had received a, shortly after you folks left, an invitation to attend a garden party with the Queen and so forth, so, you know, we talk about six degrees of separation, and so, there's not much between, you know, several of you folks and the Queen. So, anyway, it was a good meeting, and I hope that we'll be able to continue regular visits between Abingdon, Virginia, and Abingdon, England, and it seemed to be a great success, all parties involved. Okay, we have approved our minutes. There are no petitions or bids to consider this morning. That brings us to reports by the town manager, and the first item is consideration of a date for the council to tour town departments. And Mr. Kelly, I'll ask you to comment about that, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, several years ago, even prior to me becoming town manager, every biennial council members were taken on a tour of the various departments. Now, the one thing I will comment on is, last time that we took this tour, we spent way too much time at the wastewater treatment plant, so I would like to condense that location down a little bit this time. It's very interesting, but there's some other departments that I think that perhaps we ought to spend more time with. We will stop there, and I think Mike has a PowerPoint presentation that lasts five or 10 minutes he's going to show, but I think it's a good opportunity for the council to see what goes on day-to-day, and to also see the physical location where town employees work from.
Very good, sir, and I think there's also a need, and whether this will be the occasion for it or not, but I've had a couple of conversations, or a conversation with Chief Sullivan not long ago, and I think there is a need for council to really have a good discussion in view of our public safety departments, and particularly in light of, you know, the tornado a little over a year ago, and really talk a bit about where we are in terms of public safety. And just, you know, the nature of what goes on with that department is one that I would like to see us spend a little bit of extra time. We did not do this tour last year, did we?
No, two years. We do it every two years.
All righty. Is there, when did you want to try to do this, July or August, or?
You know, it's, a lot is dependent upon the next consideration of the capital improvement retreat. I've heard from a few of the council members that July is a tough month on some dates, so, I'm open to July and August. Once I get into September and October, I get very busy with other things, so, one of those two months will probably work better for me.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I would like to ask the council to consider sending the capital improvement plan to both the planning commission and the Board of Architectural Review, and letting citizens have input into what is currently there. That would take us to the end of the month. I think the planning commission meets the 4th Monday in July, is that correct? Okay, and so, that would take us to the end of July, but we would have had citizen input before we, you know, complete our work. And I think the planning, you know, I don't know about all the members of each one of those boards, but I know that there are some members that have expressed an interest in knowing about the plan and, you know, what's going on with it. So, I would be open to moving it, you know, just because of that.
Mr. Mayor, that would be fine. Ultimately, planning commission has a public hearing on the capital improvement plan before it's adopted, but if you want to do it in advance, that would be, we wouldn't necessarily have to do the public hearing, we could unveil it, let them comment on it, have a public hearing at another date.
Well, I don't want to just let the two commissions do it, I want, at those two meetings, to put a notice out to the public that they can come and, you know, review it and have some input, that, you know, and that way, we would have the citizen input on the record.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, then.
But wouldn't what they review be the old plan, not the new plan?
Yeah. Right. But we're talking about updating it, so, they would have to review the old plan in order to have any questions or suggestions.
So, how would, just the mechanics of how we would proceed with that, would it be primarily, you're suggesting, I gather, first of all, sort of hold a public hearing, but all the council, all the members of those commissions would receive copies of the plan, they would review it, we would ask them to have a discussion at their meeting and seek input from the public about the plan, does it currently exist, and to comment about what they feel like needs to be updated, changed?
Right, if they've got any issues or suggestions about what we've already done with the plan. And, you know, I think Abingdon alerts and, you know, our email blast could let most of the people who are going, would show up, that would probably let them know, I don't know that you have to go through the expense of a public hearing notice at that time, because, as Mr. Kelly said, we have to, we do need to have a public hearing after it's completed.
I think what we ought to do, and I think this is, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lowe, but I think what we really need to do is to have basically a public forum design-type charrette, like we've done with some of the other projects around town, and we can put those items on display, and we can do it either at a regular planning commission, or we can schedule an additional meeting and have the public come and express those things. Is that...
It is. I think that at those two meetings is perfectly fine to do. I don't think you need to have another meeting, yet another meeting, because, you know, the planning commission's going to have to make recommendations about the capital improvement plan anyway, so, if they have direct contact with the public, I think that's a good thing. And I think if the Board of Architectural Review has direct contact with the public, it's a good thing, because some of those, some of those plans include historic properties.
Exactly, and I think, I'm going to look back to Garrett, is that, we can get that on the upcoming agenda, can't we, Garrett?
The B A R meets this Thursday, so...
We can, we can get the blast out. Also, along these lines, Ashley Cooper will be here next Wednesday, 5:00 a.m. for public hearings on the school apartments. Will we get that announced now?
Will we be able to get this on the bar agenda, since Mr. Berry is...
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday, or is that...
Yeah.
We could do that and have the plan available and list it as an item for discussion. And then, if you just get with Floyd to get the alert and the blast out about it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we've had a, what appears to be a consensus that we would forward these items to the Board of Architectural Review and the Planning Commission for their input and public comment before we begin our own deliberations on this by way of a retreat. It appears that would happen in July. Would we want to be looking at a time in August for our retreat, you know, for the purpose of this discussion?
I know that September is not a good month. I know that we have the muster ground and the kids down there, October, there's V M L. Well, actually, it's September, it's actually September, it's the same weekend as the, as the, as the dedication of the Visitors and Interpreter Center. And, I mean, October's a busy time for our tourism season, but also we have Virginia Hounds Festival going on, as well as, I know that I have a son getting married on the eighteenth. Then we have the Bristol Race that's the next week, and August is gonna be just as busy as any other month, as far as my schedule is concerned. Unless, unless we do it during the weekday.
Is, does anybody have July the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth available? Because that's after both of those commission meetings.
It's the opening of the Hounds Festival. We have tractor show for Fairview fundraiser, as well as the upcoming car show that, that we'll correct here in a minute, 'cause it's listed incorrectly at the, at the bottom of our minutes, only bottom of our agenda.
I have my annual back-to-school shopping trip scheduled with my family that weekend.
August the third is still the Hounds Festival. Do you all have obligations? Or August the tenth, is the festival closed by then?
The festival's not closed by then. We have a car show coming up that time. It's the eleventh.
The car show was the twenty-eighth?
No, the tractor show's the twenty-eighth. The car show, the car show is the eleventh, and that's a fundraiser for Fairview also. It's just a, my, that's just a busy time for, for me because of tourists coming in and trying to get stuff changed out for down at the bed and breakfast. It's just a, it's just tough to be away during that time.
Well, what about August twenty-fourth, the weekend of the twenty-fourth?
Race weekend?
Yeah.
I'm out of town all week.
Are you?
Thirty-first.
Okay, well, guys, what's the prospect that if, instead of, you know, retreating out of town, you know, we retreat locally for a day? You know, there may need to be some other approach to it, but I, you know, this ability to have the, the schedules of the parties that are here coordinate without six months' advanced notice seems to be out of, out of the realm of possibility.
I'm fine with that if, you know, if we can take a.
One, one of the things you can look at, I don't know how Gray's schedule works, but that's, that, the first weekend in September after Labor Day?
I'm out of town that weekend.
Okay.
The fair starts that weekend?
What about the next?
What about the next?
September's not, I mean, I, you know, I can go to the Planning Commission meeting and make my comments if, if you all need to, but September, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm booked September.
Well, it would be good to have everyone there, I think.
Well, how about we look for a day in August or late July?
Can anybody be here during the working week, as Mr., as Mayor Morgan said?
I could arrange to take a, you know, a day of vacation as required.
And work until we're finished, even if it includes going to dinner and coming back to the meeting. I mean, sometimes we're here till eleven o'clock at night on council meetings.
I'd rather do it on a weekend, but I ain't taking vacations any more than I would do if I have to, if I have to either, but I'd rather do it on a weekend.
Well, how about all-day Saturday in that regard?
I'd do, you know, work it out. Anybody lost that going on Saturday?
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty flexible in terms of my schedule, you know.
What, what about if, if everyone will email, each of you all will email all available dates you have in the upcoming month to me and Cecile, and we'll pick the common date and get back to everybody.
By upcoming month, do you mean July?
Let's do July and August if, if we could, and then surely we can, we can hit a day or two that we have some common.
But it has to be after, is the, is the Planning Commission July the twenty-third, is that correct?
Yes.
Certainly, it has to be after July the twenty-third. And I can tell you for the record, after July the twenty-third, I'm available until the first of September.
Okay, now, there's also the need for the tour that we've discussed. And the tour, you know, is gonna need to be during the week, you know?
Does that take a day off?
Yeah, you know, while the departments are open. So, is that one that we should just sort of look at those available dates and let you get back with the recommendation?
I think so. If every, if everyone will provide, if you will send them to Cecile and me, and why don't we go ahead and say Kim Kingsley as well? Between three of us, we'll be able to pinpoint some common days. And that one usually has been an all-day event.
It was a hot one last time.
Yeah, doesn't look appropriate to the sewer plant on July afternoon.
I thought we'd start there this year and get it over with.
Well, the last time we were there, you know, was really a brand spanking new, state-of-the-art facility, and it really did merit, you know, some, you know, some time out there. And it probably, and it certainly is the most cost, the most expensive single asset that we have, you know, it's really, you know.
It, it's the most expensive, it's the most interesting by anybody who goes out there. School kids go out there on tours and everything, almost charge admission for people to go out there.
All right. Okay, so the consensus is that we will be sending dates and copying Ms. Rosenbaum, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Kingsley of our availability in July and August. They'll look for a common date, get back with us and see what we can pin down. Okay, any further discussion regarding that matter? Okay, we have no resolutions or ordinances to act on today, no unfinished business that needs to be noted. Matter's not on the agenda, but I would ask if there is anyone here at the present time that wishes to bring a matter before the council's attention? I hear no one at the present time. Are there matters that the, that the council wishes to bring to the attention of this body or reports that you wish to make at the present time? And I would start, ask Mr. Humphries to start, please.
The only council report I would have would be the one that I'm bringing back from England. They were very generous, kind to all of us, accommodating, and the, and worked very diligently to make sure that the Skype communication went through and went through fairly flawlessly. I hope it was the same way on this end, but on our end, it, it, they, they had, had worked hard to make sure that they made it happen. There were numerous events that we were all invited to through the Twinning Society. Would like to give a special recognition to Stella and Howard and Garrett. Would you, would you give me their last names?
Carter.
Carter. And I think that it might be appropriate, if we haven't already done so, to drop Stella a note and Howard a note and, as well as Mayor Monica Lovett expressing our thanks and their kindness and hospitality. And as, as far as, as anything else, I do not have anything else, sir.
Mrs. Loeb?
I would just like to ask the council's consideration for something. On a regular occasion, the mayor has a need to meet with the town manager to go over business activities. I would like to ask the council to allow the vice mayor to meet with the assistant town manager on a monthly basis and, you know, maybe that'll help keep us all up to speed.
I don't know that that requires even an action on our part. I think, you know, that there is no reason in the world why that shouldn't happen.
Well, let me ask you, I don't mean, just, just as a thought, two members can meet at any given time with, why, why doesn't the mayor and assistant mayor both meet with Greg and then they're getting the same message from Greg, rather than maybe getting a different message from Garrett and a different message from Greg? Then that will put us on the same page. And so, if you have a meeting, then both of you be in attendance.
I'm certainly receptive, you know, to working like that whenever possible. It's, once, I will strive, whenever we have a meeting that is scheduled, to see to it that our vice mayor is aware of it and invited to attend. Once in a while, some things seem to happen on very short notice, but otherwise, I don't know any reason why we couldn't approach it that way.
Would that be okay with you?
That's fine.
I'd like the assistant town manager to probably be included in those meetings.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Anything else? Mr. Howard?
Just one comment, the fire at the gazebo across from the post office yesterday, it caused damage to that, like, it's probably cigarette smoke. I've got some pictures of my wife's, too. That's all I have.
Mr. Berry?
Nothing.
All right, very good, and.
Green's got.
We're, we're coming back there. You, you were serving as our representative, Mr. Berry, on the medical school. I would like to express my appreciation to Mr. Zady for the reports and so forth that he's generated and.
Yeah, I guess the update there would be working with Cecile last Friday to get him to the council, do a full brief in front of the council and the public on where the King School of Medicine is.
Very good.
And that'll be in the August meeting.
All righty, well, I'm serving.
It's August sixth.
August the sixth. There is an update.
Very good. Well, I'm, I'm pleased with what I've seen of his efforts so far and, you know, I think at the, at the moment, your, your board and Mr. Zady, I think, seem to be moving things forward as well as, as possible.
We're working as a, as a team.
Very good, sir. And you were serving as vice chair of that body at present time.
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
And Dr. Moore is.
Dr. Moore is the chair.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I attended a senior center board meeting this past week, and the United Way's new mission is children and what?
It's education and nutrition.
Education and nutrition. It's, it's all about children this year. So, Washington County made sure that the fifty thousand dollars that they give, or that the money they give to the United Way, they get, that they made sure that fifty thousand goes to the senior center. That was thirty-eight or thirty-nine thousand dollars less than the senior center gets from United Way, because senior center does not fit into the children's mission. So, they are scheduled to be on our agenda for August, and I just want to alert the council of what's going on over there. Now, you know, they've, they've got some plans, the board has been meeting regularly, the director's doing a good job, but they did lose almost forty thousand dollars in funding this year because of the mission statement of the United Way.
Again, how much funding have they received of that?
Eighty, like eighty-seven or eighty-eight thousand, and they got fifty thousand this year. And, you know, they, they don't, you know I come budgets. They don't have a lot of overspending, and they just got their audit report from, an auditor from Gates City named, who's David Jackson. He did a very thorough audit. He reported that all of the issues that they had had was taken care of. He was extremely impressed and, and, you know, they're, while, while they implement new policy, I just want to alert the council that there's a great possibility that they're gonna need some help this year until they can get, you know, things going. I think they're meeting with Mr. Jackson, they've got some new plans and, you know, they are implementing some things, but it will take them a little bit of time and they lost a significant amount of funding.
They also lost some funding on their, on the meals program, two days a week to one day a week.
Right, from, right. So, we're gonna have a big gap in, in the senior services this year.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I would just like to start by saying that I have, and a lot of this is in my manager's report, but I think it's very important that I publicly say this to each of you, that I have met individually with every one of the town employees, full-time employees, over the course of the past two weeks about the V R S mandate. And everyone seems to have a good grasp on it. They were very appreciative that they heard it straight from the horse's mouth, and they wanted me to also convey to the council that they were very appreciative that the council was concerned that they not lose any money out of their pocket, which was why we had included the bonus aspects, which council will take up again at the, at the August meeting, as I understand it. But do want you to know that they are very thankful to the council for allowing that to be handled in the way that it was handled. There was not one single employee who spoke in opposition to any aspect of this and were very, very grateful. And I, I too want to say to the council that I'm very grateful that, that you handled this matter in the way that, that you did. It goes a long way to boosting the morale of the workforce. They do a, they do a tremendous job. They call, they get called out at all hours of the night, depending upon the circumstances, and by and large, they love the town of Abingdon, at least working here. The ones that live here, I know, love the town of Abingdon as much as we do. So, my thanks to you and, and town employees' thanks to you for, for that aspect of, of the town budget. With that said, I would also like to offer you what cost me three pairs of shoes and a pair of moldy pants, but while we were in Abingdon, England at the traditional bun throwing, I was able to catch nine of them. And so, I brought, and Ms. Eisenhower, I believe, was able to somehow get them through customs and to get them shellacked. Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Rosenbaum snuck them through customs.
I might have gone and spiked them to the customs lady.
But anyway, I'd like, I'd like to pass these down so that each of you would have a shellacked bun that was caught from the bun throwing in Abingdon, England.
Correct, I did do the shellack, yes.
All right. And I, I will, I will comment that I have, I have personally sent emails to a few of the folks that we had email addresses to and indicated that we would try to follow up with some type of written thank you for their hospitality, but I sent Stella and Howard a nice little note and Mike Badcock and Mayor Lovett, so sent them, sent them an email. And I got, I've just got to say, they treated us with, with the best of hospitality while we were there, and they kept us going from the minute we got there until the minute we left with something, with something going on. The meeting, I gotta tell you, came off like a, what I would view as a Hollywood movie set, because we literally raced in, got there, and they got this thing set up like within a matter of a minute or two. There was no time to think about what was going on. We just hoped and prayed we got it right, and, and I hope it turned out as good on this end as it did on our end. Also, was, was presented by Mayor, I believe it was Mayor Lovett?
It was.
With, with a plaque that we will, we need to proudly display at some point in time, and I will pass that down, and I'll, I'll put the onus on Mr. Jackson to find out the appropriate place where that needs to be displayed.
Wow.
So, I believe that's all that I have to report this time, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, and, and we will, I'm sure this will go in our Abingdon collection. I noticed that their motto is faith and industry, while ours is honor of the past, hope for the future, and both are very good mottos. But yes, very, very kind of them to present us with that. And I will, will note that I have really not a whole lot to report or add. I do want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve as mayor for the next two years. I, I do believe we have an extraordinarily good council and staff in the town of Abingdon, and I'm optimistic that very good things will be happening in the future. And I know that everyone. And I know that everyone who was involved with this town has a sincere love of the community and a desire to serve. Is there any further business that we need to handle this morning?
Mr. Mayor, just one, just a couple more things. One of them is in the announcement section that you will see on August eleventh, it says car show at Fairview. And Kevin Worley, if you'll help me out, we have reserved Latcher Field for August the eleventh, have a car show at Latcher Field, have we not? Yeah. So that should, instead of reading car show at Fairview, that is kind of the traditional car show we've had that, that has been associated with the Virginia Highlands Festival for years. And, and when we're doing it as a fundraiser for Fairview at that time. So as you know, if you'll note in our, our announcements, we have three fundraisers coming up for Fairview. We are now moving into combination of educational component for Fairview and developing an educational component as well as furnishings. And so that's, that's, a lot of that money will be earmarked and, and go toward the Fairview project. And then the other thing I was going to mention that I forgot to mention before is that my wife's cousin, Maria Barrow, who used to be Susan Dewey's executive secretary with the Virginia Housing and Redevelopment Authority in Richmond, went with us, of course, to, to England. And she made, I don't know how large, it's about an hour long disc of pictures from there. And she sent one to, to us, one to Milton Maiden, who went, also one to Alan Leslie Bradley. And I've asked Floyd to burn copies for each and every one of you all too so that you all will be able to see some of the activities that went on and be able to visualize what we were able to celebrate.
Very good, sir.
And then I'll shut up now.
Well, we do need to note for the record, the announcements that are listed here, and thank you for reminding me of that. July fourth, the town offices will be closed for the July holiday. On that day, there will be major activities and events going on at the Coombe Center. Fireworks that evening at nine forty-five, and again, they're based at the Coombe Center. I'd also remind everybody that the Daughters of American Revolution will have an annual ceremony at Sinking Springs Cemetery the morning of the fourth. I believe it's about ten o'clock.
It is, sir.
Okay, and that's a very nice ceremony that I've usually been able to, to attend and hope to this year as well. In addition to the commemoration of the independence of our country, there's also recognition of some young people who have written essays and so forth and awards are given. And there's some, it's a very, very good and meaningful day and I would encourage everyone on council and those in attendance to come that day if they possibly can. We note on July fourteenth, there is junk, junk in the trunk. Eight to twelve at Latcher Field, also a benefit for the Fairview Homestead, the Cruisin' Classics Car Show, Car Club Show. Again, that is the twenty-first, that will be on Main Street here. The twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, the tractor show at Fairview Homestead. If you comment just briefly, Mr. Humphries, about the nature of that show?
Well, we have paired with the local tractor club. This is the second year of the, of the show. There will be many antique tractors. It drew a fairly large crowd last year. It is the Friday and then the Saturday of the opening of the Highlands Festival, the Friday before, prior to. So, you know, when you're, when all the activity's going on prior to the show, to the Highlands Festival and nothing's kind of, anything that you can get into, like the antiques market or whatever, think about coming up to Fairview that day. They also will have, they also have a antique threshing machine as well as a wheat binder. And a wheat binder is kind of rare to, to have in a working condition. They have a wheat binder and have already been binding wheat up on Hillman Highway. So you can see the wheat already twisted and bound in the field. One of the interesting things about that is, is at Fairview, is, is that it's been, it's been a traffic stopper. The traffic has slowed down and they've actually had a little mini traffic jam on Hillman Highway. People slowing down to look and watch that threshing machine. So they decided they would save a few rows of wheat to be able to do during the Highlands Festival as well as showing how to take the wheat from the shaft and so that we all could watch and, and learn from that. And like I say, I don't know, how many, how many tractors did they have last year, antique tractors? Yeah, thirty and forty antique trucks they had. So, and these are people who painstakingly take these. Most all of them are in working order and most all of them, sometimes, sometime during the year, they use to do some type of farming activity, so.
Very good, sir. Okay, well, I am pleased to...
Well, and while we're doing it, can we kind of mention junk in the trunk?
Yes.
The junk in the trunk is what is a first time, it's the very first time event. It is kind of loosely based on Brimfield and the Brimfield event is one of the largest events. I mean, it covers like, I don't know how many acres, fifteen acres, twenty acres? And, and so, you know, Lee and Leslie Kino, the famous antique twins, they got there, they cut their teeth at this show. And basically it's cars and vans and people who just pull up. It could be, you know, one of the local, one of the local farmers or local merchants or whatever, open their trunk up, display what they have, and you buy right out of the trunk. You buy right out of the display that they have. And, you know, like I said, Brimfield's been highly successful. I'm not sure how many years it's been going, but I would say probably over fifty years that Brimfield has been going and using the same format. And so we're going to be, we're going to be trying to do something similar to that. And I would proudly, proudly like to say that the mayor, ex-mayor, my mother, Lois Humphries, is actually in charge of doing that. So, so bring your junk out and your trunk out and let's, try, try, try to, try to make it a positive and good event, so.
Mr. Kelly, you look like you have words right on your...
Fourteen. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to comment in light of the dry weather. Fortunately, we got a little rain last night, but in light of the dry weather, we need to be mindful of, and I've discussed this with Chief Sullivan and with our fire chief, of how dry it has been and with Fourth of July coming on and people setting off their own fireworks, it does present somewhat of a hazard. We have a plan in place, at least preliminarily in talking to Joey, that he will assess the situation at the Fourth of July celebration at the Coombe Center after it's over. And there might be, after people leave, there might even be some spraying down of the playground area, which has a lot of mulch and perhaps the wooded area, just to ensure that we don't get any smoldering effects. I think that most of those things are the least of their worries. It's more of the worries of the individuals in town who are shooting them off.
Okay, very, very good. Well, and there's a definite need to encourage safety here at this point in time with the weather, as you're noting, being as dry as that is, but hopefully we'll have a very safe Fourth of July. We also note that we have the Highlands Festival starting July the twenty-eighth, running through the twelfth of August. August fourth will be the advanced Abingdon's 5K Road Race and hopefully we'll continue to have good turnouts for that. Our next currently scheduled council meeting will be on August the sixth and again on the eleventh. We're noting the car show at Fairview.
No, Latcher Field.
Latcher Field, excuse me. The fundraiser for, the car show is a fundraiser for Fairview that will be held at Latcher Field.
Yes, sir.
All right.
One comment and one question. Our second, our extra work session, is that starting in August? And if it is, what's the date?
It's August the sixteen.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's the question.
Okay, so, and let's review the place and time downstairs. I think we decided it would be seven or seven-thirty?
Actually, I think six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay. And again, that is August the seventeenth.
No.
Sixteen.
If you would.
I think it's a Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
And I certainly remember the difficulties we had pinning down that date. Okay, now, so again, that will be happening in August as opposed to July?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and then I was at church yesterday and a little boy told me how much fun he had at the mustering grounds children's camp. So, you know, it, it's off to a good start.
I think Mr. Jackson has some good pictures on Facebook, don't you? LeAnn has, LeAnn Hunter. So if you have, if you're, if you're a Facebook friend, I would suggest, if you're not, you might want to be. For the muster grounds, there's some wonderful pictures of the kids in colonial outfits and, and, and out doing all the activities that, that LeAnn Hunter, as well as Katie Jesse and, give me the third...
Theresa Yates.
Theresa Yates have put together.
Okay. All righty, anybody else? Okay, hearing no further comments or business for this occasion, I will declare us to be adjourned. Thank you.